Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome as I call to order the August 2022 Meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you are joining us via our live room or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. I ask that you silence your cell phones at this time. I remind you that if you wish to speak to either an agenda item at the public hearings for policy changes or at the public forum, you must complete a speaker request form found on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forward to Mr. Welly right here at the front table or wherever it is. Right there. Okay. Dana? If it is this board's practice to pull items from the consent agenda when someone asks to speak to them, the consent agenda items include curriculum and instruction, finance, human resources, and operations. You must submit your speaker form prior to the approval of the consent agenda. This meeting was properly advertised in Pensacola News Journal on August 1st, 2022. Legal Notice 533-9029. It is the tradition of the Escambia County School Board to begin our meetings with an invocation or motivational moment followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This month is Dr. Adler, District 3, will lead us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce to some of you and present to others Reverend Robin Alexander. He is the pastor of Shallow Baptist Church here in Pensacola.
All rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you this morning or this day for allowing us to be here. And Lord, we ask now as we go forth in this meeting that your Spirit be present, oh God. Father, we ask now that you would give us guidance, understanding, and wisdom as we go forth, Lord. And we ask that you allow us to engage in meaningful decisions, oh God, and conversations. For the decision that will be made here today will affect not only the schools, not only the staff, not only administration, and not only the children, but also the community. So we ask you now to have us to have your way, oh God. And we will be careful to give you the glory and the honor, Lord. We ask that those who will have to make decisions today, God, that you will fill them with your grace, that they will make sound decisions, oh God, that will affect not only the person that they are making a decision about, but also those that they will go home to and the neighborhood that they live in. But Lord, we know that nothing can be done without you. So we give you the honor and we give you the praise. For this we ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a few. First, under Section 18, Consent Curriculum Workforce Education, add Item B Cooperative Agreement between the District Board of Trustees of Pensacola State College, Florida and the School Board of Escambia County, Florida. Next, under Section 24, Consent Finance Purchasing, add Item J, RFP Award, Direct Delivery of Milk and Dairy Products to School Cafeterias. Add Item K, Annual Agreement, Zendesk Software Licenses. Next, under Section 31, Consent Operations Facilities Planning, Miscellaneous. Delete Item D, Second Amendment to Lease Agreement for the former ECO Service Center. Add Item E, Second Amendment to Lease Agreement to the former ECO Service Center. Under Section 42, Items from the Superintendent Employee Discipline, add Item A, Recommendation for Employee Suspension Without Pay, and add Item B Recommendation for Employee Termination. And that concludes our additions and deletions.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. State statutes and school board rules require the changes made to the agenda after publication be based on finding a good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in record. I do. Is there any objection from any board members to additions or deletions? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I'm going to stop us right there for just a second because I want to remind the board we are back on the new system. We'll be voting via our screens. So be ready for that. So we're going to give it a try tonight. Any discussion on this item? If not, please vote.
Mr. Adams, I think there's some items that need to be pulled.
Is it?
Is there not? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay.
Multitasking.
All right. So, and I will try to go pretty slow for Holly. For me and Dr. Adler? I didn't get a pop. Well, I bet you I got to go to that screen.
Go to the top.
To the top.
Go to the agenda.
Did I get there, Paul?
No.
With the little...
Just hit it.
Meetings, agenda.
Working?
I don't know. It was just on when I got here. There it goes. Okay. Hey, this practice makes perfect. Yeah, I just say, Rodney, am I good? And he goes, yeah. All right. All right. We are now moving into committee and departmental reports. We will start with the PTA presentation. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. We have our president for PTSA. Just had a big training session on Saturday. So President Gamro, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to update you on the Escambia County Council of PTA. ECPTA has been very busy since our last report. On July 21st through 24th, five of the board members, including myself, attended the Florida PTA Leadership Convention. The theme for this year's convention was based on Harry Potter. Remember that little bit of information. At convention, we attended training workshops which included classes such as learned optimism, building a team out of dysfunction, and grants, as well as core courses such as secretary and treasurer sessions. We participated in four general meeting sessions which included voting in new officers and voting on a proposed bylaws revision. The voting process was quite interesting. As IA was a teller and helped count the votes, it was quite intense at times. To cap off the experience, we had a wonderful time networking with their peers from other county councils. We were quickly able to use our experiences as we finalized plans for ECCPTA's annual leadership training and general meeting, which was held last Saturday, August 13th. Superintendent Dr. Smith, board members Mr. Adams, Mrs. Hightower, Dr. Adler, and Mr. Fetzko were in attendance. We thank each of you for taking the time to support ECCPTA. The training, which is for our school's PTA members, provided classes in the core board member duties, president, secretary, and treasurer, which were taught by our ECCPTA board members Samaras Curvin, Karen White, and Carla Slack. Additionally, Karen White taught a class using a presentation that she created, which merged two topics she learned about at the Florida PTA Convention. Board member Melissa Waters taught a class on grants, also based on what she learned at state. Jennifer Wazalinko and Shannon DeJesus created and taught a class on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Kirsten Palmer led a class on reflections, and Megan Boone a class on PTA bylaws. Our other board members, such as Patrel Tolles with our tech support, and Crystal Samuel and Parker May supported areas such as check-in, daycare, and all-around support. But yet, there's more. We also had classes taught by the Escambia County Public Schools employees, Wanda Codick, who taught a class on volunteering and mentoring, and the principals and presidents' class was taught by Jeannie Pilgrim and Ann McIntyre. Additionally, attendees had the option to attend sessions presented by All Pro Dad and Gulf Coast Kids House. Part of the day included a vendor fair for attendees to learn about fundraising and services available to our children, families, and community. I would like to acknowledge our sponsors, Fish Barn, Arthodonics, Navy Federal Credit Union, Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers, Cox Communications, Florida Power and Light. Our food sponsors and donors were Coffee Guy Cafe, Chick-fil-A Navy Boulevard, HomeFi Digital Mortgage, and Chick-fil-A Nine Mile Road. We could not have held this totally free event without all of them. I could stand here and talk for hours about our day, but will conclude with a sincere thank you to the Leadership Training Committee, which was led by board members Samaras Curvin, Bree Bruni, and Jennifer Harrison. Also, a big thank you to everyone on the ECCPTA board for pulling together as a team to create a great event that kicked off the start of what ECCPTA hopes to be an awesome year of supporting the schools, families, and community. We stand united with the Escambia County Public Schools in this mission. And now, we would like to present the board members and Dr. Smith with a gift of appreciation for supporting the Escambia County Council of PTA.
Escambia.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you very much.
I forgot to say, those were made by our immediate past president, Samaras Curvin, and we wore them down at state, and they were a big hit.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for all the work y'all did. PTAs are very important for our schools. Okay, let's see where I am now. All right, Mr. Superintendent, your next item?
We have a special recognition. And I'm going to ask Mr. Steve Harrell, our Director of Career and Technical Education, to come introduce our special guests.
This is always a great honor when we have the opportunity to present students with scholarships that our generous community has agreed to provide those students with. And each year, we take students to the Construction and Career Day that's put on by the Department of Transportation. And at least one of our board members was there this year to operate some heavy machinery for us and let us take pictures of him doing so. And I know he's made sure to tell you all about that a few times.
Where's our risk management guy?
Had full supervision the entire time, I promise.
I've now learned how to dig that hole and fill it up with... Never mind.
But we have representatives from the Department of Transportation and from the ABC Group. We have both Michelle Hill and Heather Baril here to present some scholarships to students who participated in the Construction and Career Day and then came back and applied for those scholarships. I don't want to steal their thunder, but this is $10,000 in combined scholarships that will be handed out tonight. So if you don't mind, I'd like to invite them to the lectern to speak. Ms. Hill and Ms. Baril?
Okay.
On the other side of me. Your show.
My name's Heather Baril. I'm with the Florida Department of Transportation, actually out of our Milton office. So we're here locally. I am one of the co-chairs for the Northwest Florida Construction Career Days event, and Michelle Hill is one of our committee members. She's a big part of our school coordination, and she helped kind of pull all the schools together to get them to our most recent event over here in April. So first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to tell you a little bit about Construction Career Days, what our goals are for the construction industry, and how this relates to our high school students here in the local area. If you're not familiar with it, Construction Career Days is a nationwide program that the Florida DOT sponsors in partnership with members of the road and bridge construction and consulting industries, and it is funded partially through grants by the Federal Highway Administration. The goal of Construction Career Days is to showcase the highway construction industry and introduce high school juniors and seniors to career paths that they may not be aware of. Our industry has a very diverse range of job opportunities that can lead to high-paying and very rewarding careers, whether you're pursuing a college degree, going to technical or trade school, or entering the workforce right after graduation. There's a significant need in our industry for skilled workers at all levels, and our event strives to connect students with local companies. CCD has been hosting events across the state of Florida for many years, but Northwest Florida has recently started participating in the program. We held our first in-person event in 2019. We then switched to virtual events in 2020 and 2021, and we were back to in-person events this past April. Both of our in-person events were held at the Santa Rosa County Fairgrounds over in Milton, and this year, students from Escambia, Santa Rosa, and Okaloosa Counties attended. I know that some of you, at least some folks in this room as well, were able to attend our event in April, and you are absolutely welcome to attend our next event, which we are currently planning for this coming spring. It's really best understood in person, but I'll try and kind of give you a taste of what the event offers. It's really very different from a traditional job fair, and honestly, very different from the types of field trips that I went on as a student. Our goal is to provide a day full of diverse hands-on activities led by industry experts to spark the students' interest in engineering and construction and connect them to employers who are hiring. By far, the most popular element of our CCD event is our equipment area. We have a field full of equipment that the students actually get to get on and operate and get a feel for what it's like to work with heavy machinery and construction materials. They get to take rides up in bucket trucks and scoop loads of dirt with an excavator. They move drainage pipes around, and they test out their skills picking up soccer balls and trying to balance them on a traffic cone with a mini excavator. We also feature nearly 30 hands-on learning labs where industry professionals teach about their jobs, talk about potential salaries, and give the students an idea of what the construction industry offers. One of the students' favorite learning labs is called Asphalt Cookies, where they learn about the different components of asphalt pavement while constructing an edible chocolate cookie that they roll out, just like you would roll in compact pavement on the roadway. They get to handle surveying equipment, and they put together highway signs where actually, you know, which are actually a lot bigger than you might think driving down the roadway. We also provide an exhibit area where colleges, technical schools, and companies who are hiring can speak one-on-one with students and provide them with information, which is more like a traditional job fair. Some companies even come with applications on hand, and they're ready to hire upon graduation. So the aspect of Construction Career Days that brings us here today is our scholarship program. All the students who attended the in-person or the virtual event in April were able to apply for a scholarship to put towards their future education or workforce plans. And I'm excited to say that as a result of very generous industry sponsors, this year, we're able to award $20,000 in scholarships. A total of 15 scholarships are being awarded to students from all three counties that attended the in-person event, as well as some students who participated in the virtual event. Today, we're here to present seven scholarship checks to Escambia County District students. I will call them up one by one, if you don't mind, and hand them their checks. And then, if everybody's okay with that, I'd like to get a group photo.
Sure.
Olin Albritton. Okay, there are two that apparently have not made it here today, Jason Garganis and Jaden Padilla. But Kenzie McLeaney, Hannah Hasbrock, Jaden, all right. Jaden made it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the scholarship recipients, and we wish the best of luck to them. And we hope to see you all at our next event, and we thank you for the support.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your support.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is Florida Commission on the Status of Women Essay Contest Winner. Tonight, I would like to introduce Ms. Kelly Skiba, Executive Director of the Florida Commission on the Status of Women, who will present Xavier Young with the first-place award in the sixth grade category for the Status of Women Essay Contest. Ms. Skiba, Xavier Young, and those who are with Xavier, please come to the podium to receive this award.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here. I am Kelly Skiba, Executive Director of the Florida Commission on the Status of Women. The commission was created over three decades ago by the Florida Legislature with a mission of improving the well-being of Florida women and girls, and by extension, all Floridians. We have a three-fold focus: collaboration, education, and celebration. We collaborate with like-minded organizations statewide to raise awareness of the challenges and issues facing Florida women and families and provide them with resources available for assistance. We educate Floridians by hosting educational forums and seminars on far-ranging women's issues, from economic challenges to climbing the ladder of success. And we celebrate the contributions and successes of women and girls. One of the ways we educate Floridians about the contributions of Florida women to our state's great history is through our annual Women's History Essay Contest. The contest is open to both boys and girls statewide and serves to celebrate women's history and increase awareness of the contributions made by Florida women, past and present. In 2021, we were honored to have hosted our ninth annual contest. Middle school students from across Florida were challenged to write a 250- to 500-word essay about a Florida woman-inventor or STEM professional, living or historic, who inspired them, and to share why they would like to meet her. I am very pleased to announce that the first-place winner in the sixth grade category, and this is from last school year, is Xavier Young from Workman Middle School. I would also like to acknowledge and thank his teacher, Helene Carrington. So please join with me in congratulating Xavier on his hard work and dedication to excellence. I am so pleased to present him with a certificate of achievement and a special recognition letter from Florida Governor Ron DeSantis, and a cash award of $100. Congratulations, Xavier. We are so proud of you. Modeste Hargus. You can find his essay on our website at FCSW.net for Florida Commission on the Status of Women.net.
All right, Ms. Superintendent, Stellar Employee of the Month.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have the August 2022 Stellar Employee of the Month. The Escambia County School District's Office of Community Involvement is proud to recognize Ms. Shante Simkins as the Stellar Employee for the month of August 2022. Ms. Simkins, please come forward with your coworkers, family, and friends. Shante Simkins is an accounting specialist in the Maintenance Department. She has been in this position for three and a half years. Ms. Simkins consistently demonstrates her commitment to excellence in the workplace. Since she was hired, she has demonstrated her commitment to our goal of continuous improvement through her efficiency in completing her job duties, as well as her genuine concern for the well-being of her coworkers. Ms. Simkins pays close attention to detail and has volunteered to spearhead many office functions that are challenging and often less than desirable. Additionally, when she has completed her primary duties of accounting specialist, she seeks additional duties by assisting her coworkers and supervisors. This ensures everyone is working as efficiently as possible. Ms. Simkins is one of the Maintenance Services Senior Office Staff Members. She is knowledgeable in many areas outside of her primary role. As such, she assists other office staff with training and mentoring new staff members and serves as a resource to staff in many areas. During the disaster recovery and restoration efforts following Hurricane Sally, Ms. Simkins was an invaluable asset and served as one of the two points of contacts within the department responsible for processing massive amounts of documentation associated with those efforts. Furthermore, Ms. Simkins' dedication to the department and the district is demonstrated on a daily basis through her commitment to ensuring that work requests from all customers are well-documented, allowing maintenance to respond as soon as possible. Ms. Simkins assists with the completion of her other office duties anytime that her coworkers are out of the office and does so without being asked and without complaint. She can be counted on to jump in wherever she's needed. Ms. Simkins is truly a valuable member of the Maintenance Support Team. Maintenance Services is blessed to have such a dedicated individual working daily to ensure all students and staff are learning and working in a safe and comfortable environment. Shante Simkins is stellar because of her excellent work ethic and dedication to the staff and students throughout the Escambia County School District. She exemplifies the pillars of people and service. And it is for these reasons and so many others that she has been selected as our Stellar Employee of the Month of August 2022. She will receive a plaque, pin, and a check for $100 from Members First Credit Union. Congratulations, Ms. Simkins.
I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Higgins for not only making work enjoyable, but also unknowingly being my mentors. I have a lot of admiration for you both. As you both taught me so much, you make showing up for work every day easy to do. I'd like to acknowledge my mom and my husband, who are here with me tonight. My mom is honestly one of the smartest people I know. I wanted to be just like her when I grew up. I don't think I've ever told her that, but I'm almost there. Thank you for always being someone I could look up to and attempt to emulate. Thank you to my husband Jeffrey Simkins, retired Navy and current School District NJROTC instructor, one-time Navy Seller of the Year and two-time Teacher of the Year at Northview High School. I always joke with him about being an overachiever, but I am so proud of him. He often says, "Attitude and effort. Good attitude and good effort will have good results." He's an awesome person and the district is lucky to have him. Most of all, I'd like to acknowledge my coworkers. My being selected as Stellar Employee is a testament to the attitude and effort put forth by each person in the department. From the front office to the back office to the techs out getting their hands dirty in the field, our goal is to ensure that our teachers, staffs, and students have what they need to make teaching and learning an effortless and enjoyable experience. Thank you for the acknowledgement. Another big thank you to my amazing coworkers and to the Maintenance Department Director and Assistant Director for their support and leadership. Thank you.
Next, we have the PTA Membership Month Resolution. Is there a motion?
I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? And while they're looking at that, Mr. Superintendent, I actually should have had you read the resolution before we voted. So if you're, while we're waiting, if you want to go ahead and read that resolution?
I would be glad.
Okay.
And while I do that, if Ms. Gamble and Ms. Boone would like to come to the podium, it'd be great. Resolution: Whereas the Escambia County Council of PTAs has a long tradition of seeking the highest possible educational advantages for all children and youth so they can realize their full potential; and whereas the Escambia County Council of PTAs assists parents in developing the skills they need to nurture and protect their children, and encourages parent and public involvement in public schools in our community, and speaks on behalf of children in schools in the community, in organizational meetings, and before public governing bodies; and whereas during the month of September 2022, special activities will be held to promote parent involvement, expand the membership of the Escambia County Council of PTAs, and broaden the PTA's base of support so it becomes a stronger and more effective voice for children in education; and whereas it is the role of the Escambia Council of PTAs to encourage parent involvement by promoting an environment in which parents are valued as primary influences in their children's lives; and whereas for more than 125 years, PTA has been a powerful voice for children, a relevant resource for parents, and a strong champion for public education, committed to making sure parent participation in education is meaningful. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September 2022 as PTA Membership Month in the School District of Escambia County, Florida, and calls upon families, schools, businesses, and communities to be our partners in announcing this resolution and to become active in participating this month. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Melanie Gamble, ECCPTA President, and Megan Boone, ECCPTA First Vice President, adopted the 16th day of August 2022.
Alright, Rodney, if you'll show the vote again for the Superintendent to read in the vote.
The motion carries five zero.
There we go. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month Resolution. Superintendent, please read the resolution.
Resolution: Whereas children are Escambia County School District's most valuable resource and their health and wellness are crucial to their success in the classroom; and whereas Northwest Florida reports an average of fifty local children newly diagnosed with cancer each year; and whereas cancer is the number-one disease killer of children in the United States, yet childhood cancer research is severely underfunded, where only 4% of the National Institute of Health allocates cancer research funding to children; and whereas research in the field of childhood cancer will allow for better treatment options, safe quality therapies, and ultimately a cure for this deadly disease; and whereas Raleigh Foundation for Childhood Cancer Research has provided a valuable resource to children and families who are afflicted with this horrendous disease. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourages others to participate in efforts throughout the year to raise awareness and funding for childhood cancer research with Raleigh Pensacola while supporting families who face devastating effects and costs. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Raleigh Pensacola, adopted the 16th day of August 2022. Also, we would ask that Mr. Juan Dang and family, who are accepting this in memory of their son Chase, please approach the podium.
Do we need to do the vote now?
Make a motion to approve the resolution is read by the Superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Motion carries five zero. What we can do is if you want to come to the podium and then we'll, if you want to
Okay. Lastly, the National Sickle Cell Awareness Month Resolution. Superintendent?
Yes, and I'm not going to be tardy on this one, so if we could have Mr. Walter Wallace. There he is, excellent. Resolution: Whereas sickle cell disease is devastating inherited blood disorder that affects thousands of people in our state and an estimated 100,000 individuals across the country; and whereas the disease causes the rapid destruction of sickle cells, which results in multiple medical complications, including anemia, jaundice, gallstone, strokes, restricted blood flow, damaged tissue in the liver, spleen, and kidneys, and death; and whereas sickle cell disease causes episodes of considerable pain in the arms, legs, chest, and abdomen of an individual; and whereas approximately 1,000 babies are born with sickle cell disease every year in the United States, with disease occurring in approximately one in every 365 newborn African-American infants and one in every 16,300 newborn Hispanic-American infants, and is found in individuals of Mediterranean, Middle Eastern, Asian, and Indian origin; and whereas more than 3 million individuals in the United States have the sickle cell trait and one in 13 African-Americans carries the trait; whereas there is 1 in 4 chance that a child born to parents who both have the sickle cell trait will have the disease. The life expectancy of an individual with sickle cell disease is often severely limited; and whereas while hematopoic stem cell transplant is currently the only cure for sickle cell disease and advances treating the associated complications of sickle cell disease have occurred, more research is needed to find widely available treatments and cures to help patients with sickle cell disease; and whereas in Escambia County, the Sickle Cell Disease Association is working to improve the quality of life for those fighting sickle cell disease by providing sickle cell counseling, screening, education, emotional support, and financial support to patients and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of September 2022 as Sickle Cell Awareness Month, and encourages all schools to participate in efforts throughout the school year to raise awareness and funding for sickle cell research while supporting families who face devastating effects and costs. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Walter Wallace, President, Sickle Cell Disease Association of Escambia County, adopted the 16th day of August 2022.
I make a motion to approve the resolution is read by the Superintendent.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Motion carries five zero.
On behalf of the Sickle Cell Disease Association for Escambia County and for the Sickle Cell Disease Association for the State of Florida, we appreciate and thank you for honoring us. And hopefully, from the beginning of this night, that we can make sure that all students herefore be able to have sickle cell talk to them in its help class. It's very important that we make sure that our kids know about sickle cell disease and sickle cell trait, especially those in the middle and high school. Also, I would not be able to thank Dr. Entler for the years of her leadership of the state organization. And we just once again thank you. And for those that are here tonight, we do have a lots of activity, fundraising activity, education activity planned for September. I'll be in the back. I'll be in the back. Come and see me. I'll get you a skate. Again, we thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will now begin the public forum. The purpose of the public forum is to give the members of the public the opportunity to address the school board on any matter as concerned, particularly regarding education and administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or respond to you typically, and typically will not engage in a back and forth dialogue in this venue. However, this board and superintendent will note your contact information for response if appropriate. And as always, we will invite you to contact any of us by phone or email for follow-up. Unless our meeting times and locations are posted on Escambia County School District website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines printed on the back of the form. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention to speak at the public forum or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. Please direct your comments to the chair. You are expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You're also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against school board members, superintendent staff, or employees will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you'll be warned by the chair and subject removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Ms. Odom will serve as parliamentarian. Ms. Buzzwell are, Elizabeth is going to be timekeeper, right? And we will start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed. When the timer sounds, please bring your comments to close as quickly as possible. The first speaker is William Clay. Hope I get that right.
Good afternoon. My name is William Clay. I see some of the individuals that I spoke to and worked beside. Ms. Hightower down over on the zoning board, Mr. Slaton, three kids ago there at Woodham, graduated from Woodham. I'm not here to talk about Escambia County School Board best business practices. I'm not concerned about that.
Sir, can you just raise that microphone a little bit more up? There you go. Thanks. You're a tall guy.
Okay, thank you. But what I am concerned, significantly concerned about is taxpayers' dollars that may be used to circumvent, you know, federal, state, and statute and policy. And what I mean by that is that the concern about what's going viral when it come down to African-American being taken down off of a board in elementary school. I think that individuals that have been vetted federally through by the Senate as well as the House of Representatives should maintain that status and qualification. And for anyone to determine that an individual like Dr. King, which have, have a federal holiday, President Obama, where he was voted twice to be our country's leader, and Harriet Tubman, which was voted to be on our twenty-dollar bill. So, and a lot of time when we have individual, I worked in operation for over twenty years and go into inform, a lot of time people do thing because they think it's right. But I, that is my significant concern about circumvent an overreach of public dollars. Got it? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next speaker is Jerry McIntosh.
I come from the same reason, Mr. Clay, we're here. Because our children need to see themselves as every other child. When I was going to school, I was taught about George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, Thomas Jefferson, and it went on and on. But no one taught me about Nat Turner, Sojourning in the Truth, Harriet Tubman, all of the great heroes that was African-American. And the thing about it, everybody need to learn so that everybody can understand where each other is coming from. We need to, children need to be taught about the great accomplishments of African-Americans as well as other students in the school system. Our children have, and we all have lived under conditions that was not conducive for a good living. There were many times before our four fathers and four parents, eyes was gouged out for trying to learn how to. They were hung from trees for trying to read, to teach someone how to read. For many years, we have taught a superior and inferior history of what has taken place in this country. The true history of America has never been taught. And I know there's a theme going around on critical race theory and all that. And most people that use the language don't even know what it mean. I ever read a book on, on critical race theory, which is not taught in any school at all on any level in, in a high school through a kindergarten, kindergarten through high school. But even the minor history of African-American, African-American has not been taught. And so, we are asking for the same thing as other people, to make sure that we have the history, make sure that our children see themselves in a more enlightened way. I knew the king was no threat to America, nor was Harriet Tubman, nor was any others. But this is the theme, it seems to me, that every time our people are shown, it's shown in a negative way. And now the negative stereotypes that's out there, that's coming from the governor on down talking about woke, left, race theories, and none of them even know what they are talking about. And that's the sad part about it. And it's so sad that we many times fall into that category of uninformed people who would not be, who will not teach in the best interest of anybody.
Thank you, sir. If there are no more speakers, this will conclude the public forum. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
We need a motion on each one, right? I move the approval of the minutes as stated for the July nineteenth regular meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Are we taking these individually as filed?
Yes.
Okay, oh boy. All right, let's do the first vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion on the next, is it July twenty-first minutes? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move the adoption of the minutes of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two special meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, can I have a motion for the July twenty-eighth minutes?
I'll make a motion for, to approve the minutes of the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two special meeting.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Do we need to state that that was the five o'clock meeting, or do we just say it's item C?
As indicated on the agenda there.
I think anything that makes it adequately appear and reflected in the minutes, that it's separate from the other one. Okay.
All right, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, I need a motion for the July twenty-eighth special meeting.
I'll make a motion for the minutes of the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two special meeting at five thirty PM.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote. Quite a bit of practice there.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to administrative appointments. Is there a motion regarding the superintendent's recommendation?
I move we approve superintendent's recommendation for administrative appointments.
Second?
I'll second, but do we need to do these individually?
We're gonna, no, we're doing it as a group, and then he'll, he'll bring them each one up, okay? All right, any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Superintendent, please introduce your appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have first, Chantel Hoskins. She's a curriculum coordinator at West Pensacola Elementary, moving to the assistant principal position at Longleaf Elementary. Ms. Hoskins, please come forward.
Congratulations, we figured out how to get away from Troy, huh?
I think.
Good evening, everyone. I was gonna write something, but I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna speak from my heart. So that's what I'm gonna do. I would like to thank, I just wanna take this opportunity to really and truly to thank God first for putting me in this space. Secondly, I also wanna thank my children, because they made a lot of sacrifices throughout my educational career. My daughter, even today, she had to leave band practice thirty minutes early. She was devastated. She loves bands. She attends West Florida High School. My son, he's supposed to be at football practice right now, but he's here, but it's okay. They practiced, they canceled the practice because of the weather. He's excited about that. He didn't want to practice today, no way. I also wanna thank all the administrators that I ever had, wonderful administrators in Escambia County, from Lincoln Park to Global Learning Academy to Home Elementary and at West Pensacola Elementary. I also wanna thank Ms. Baker, she's here tonight, for being an awesome, awesome leader. I have learned so much from her. I also learned so much from Ms. Gilmore, she couldn't make it tonight, but I, that's our assistant principal. I've learned so much from her. I'm excited about the new opportunity, and I'm very excited about going to Longleaf and working with Troy Brown and just learning and growing and becoming united, so every student can succeed. And again, I just wanna thank all of you, and that's it.
Mr. Brown's kinda famous, isn't he?
Yes, he's famous. He's a good guy, though. I worked a car rider line with him the other day.
Congratulations, Ms. Hoskins. Now we have Ms. Anna Tetter. She is a board certified behavior analyst, moving into the project manager for ZEDNET with Fidlers. Ms. Tetter, please come to the dais.
Thank you, Dr. Smith and members of the board. I am beyond excited to take on the responsibilities of the project manager for ZEDNET. Those who have worked with me over the years know that my passion for supporting all of our students runs deep, as does my understanding that in order to do so, we need to have collaboration between our schools, families, and community agencies. With the focus of ZEDNET including those areas of collaboration, education, and youth and family support, this opportunity feels like a dream come true, and I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we do have a couple interim appointments that we typically do not bring to the, to the board meeting, but that, so that will conclude our administrative appointments.
All right, thank you. Did you wish to announce what those interim moves were?
Certainly, we can share the interim appointments. We have Cheryl Johnacek, who is the assistant principal at Malino Park Elementary. She will be the interim school principal at Malino Park Elementary for this year. And then we have Laura Robinson, who's a curriculum coordinator at Longleaf Elementary, will be the interim assistant principal at Malino Park Elementary for this upcoming year.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We have one item for the first reading, changes to school board policy, chapter two, human resources. Is there a motion?
Would the motion be that we are to approve the advertisement of this?
Right. Yeah.
Changes to chapter two.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Now would be a good time, Patty, we had to clear that up. But, so, we don't have to do any reading or anything, it's just. Okay, all right, any discussion? Okay, if not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. We have one item for public hearing, changes to the student progression plan. After a motion, second, I will call for the public hearing before we take a vote. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to adopt the changes to the student progression plan.
Second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, now we will ask for a public hearing. I do not have any public hearing forums turned in. I'll close the public hearing. Any board discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item of business is approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All right, thank you. Are there any items to be pulled? Alan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to pull thirty-one E.
Thirty-one E. Thirty-one E. Hey, that's the ad. Thirty-one E pulled. Okay. Is there any other items to be pulled? Okay, we'll go to curriculum, finance, human resources, and we got the thirty-one E already, operations. operations. If no, any other items? Please vote on the Cassinagena minus to pull item 31E.
Motion carries five zero.
And Rodney, we do love how the vote comes on the screen now. Thank you. All right. Next, I need a motion on item 31E, second amendment to lease agreement for former E-cell service center. Do I have a motion?
Move the adoption of item 31E. I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I am abstaining from voting on item 31E, second amendment to lease agreement for the formal E-cell service center due to being on the board, a board member for the Community Action Program Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, we have items from the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent, employee discipline, what is your recommendation for item A?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Recommend approval for items A and.
They have to be handled individually.
For item A, as noted on the board agenda, with details provided in the board backup.
Move the adoption of the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation for item B?
Recommend approval for item B, as noted on the board agenda, with details provided in the board backup.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the superintendent's recommendation for item 42B.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent, item 43A, what is your recommendation?
Recommend approval for item A, as noted on the board agenda, with details provided in the board backup.
Is there a motion?
Move the approval of the Escamia County Public Schools Foundation Board of Director nominees.
Second the motion.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you, sir. Lastly, items from internal auditing. The first item is item A, inventory reports for 33 cost centers. Is there a motion?
Move the approval of item 42A inventory reports for 43, 33 cost centers. I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? We always appreciate the great job of our internal auditing. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, item B, summary of the 2021, 2022 inventory adjustment reports. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Huh?
There's, there's not any action that's stipulated there, so.
They're gonna fix it, I guess, here.
We're just accepting the report? Okay, okay.
We'll let Holly catch up on us there? Huh? Okay.
I made the motion, Holly.
And then Ms. Hightower did the second? We got a lot of practice tonight. We were doing pretty good there. We, we got like pros. Yeah. All right, he came up.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, anything for the good order?
Just, Mr. Chair, I, I just want to applaud everyone for the start of the school year. I know the rain has probably not been helpful. I know we've had car rider lines that have tried patience of all those out there, but I thank you to all the staff, the teachers, everybody at the schools that have the true intent of keeping our students safe. So, we appreciate you. I know it's a hard job.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Bill?
Ditto.
Okay. And I just want to say thank you to our operations. We started pouring asphalt for the new car rider line at Beale Elementary, and I put out a little notice on Facebook. Great to have that monsoon break. And as soon as I posted it, guess what happened? It just started storming. So anyway, I know it's hard for Mr. Dennis's crew with this, this weather, because he has many, 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 many projects going on across the district. So appreciate all the work you do. Yes, Mr.?
Can we put a plaque up, or could we name that the Kevin Adams Highway?
I'd just be glad when it's done. I'd just be glad when it's done. Dr. Entler, any comments?
I would just like to thank my son, Michael. We went to all of the schools in District Three yesterday. We could not fill the bus with school supplies, but we filled a big bag. And all of the principals and assistant principals were so appreciative of the extra school supplies.
All right, good deal. All right, if nothing, Mr. Superintendent, you have anything before we go?
Just want to thank you all for, for your work in getting the school year started. Our staff, as Ms. Hightower brought up, we've, we're off and running. We're looking forward to a great year.
Good deal. All right. If nothing else, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, we are now adjourned.